Good evening, I'm Michael J representing the League of Women Voters of Bellingham and Watkin County. Founded nationally in 1920 and locally in 1956, the League is a nonpartisan organization with more than 700 affiliates in all 50 states. Our goals are to encourage informed and active participation in government, increase an understanding of major public policy issues, and influence public policy through education and advocacy. The League never endorses candidates or political parties. Membership is open to all people aged 16 and older of any gender, and we invite you to join. Tonight's forum is being recorded and the recordings will be available on our website, l w v bellingham watkin dot org and on the City of Bellingham YouTube channel as well as BTV Bellingham. No portions of this forum may be rebroadcast in part or in full without written consent of the League of Women Voters of Bellingham Watkin County. Questions for this forum have been prepared in advance by the League with input from the public. Those attending live may submit a question using the Q and A button at the bottom of your screen, and we will ask as many questions as time permits. Tonight, we're hosting candidates Michael Liliquist and Eve Smaeson Marcus, who are running for the Ward Six position on the Bellingham City Council. The six-member city council is the legislative body for the city, responsible for setting public policies, adopting long-range plans, approving the budget and taxes, and passing laws. Council members are engaged in the community and responsive to constituent concerns. All Bellingham voters may vote for this position, and it is a four-year term. Here are the rules for this forum. Each candidate may make a two-minute opening statement and a one-minute closing statement. In alphabetical order, candidate Liliquist will be going first for both the opening and the closing statements. Each candidate will be asked the same questions, and you'll have up to 90 seconds to answer, and I will alternate who goes first each time. Also, you each have a challenge card you may use to challenge your opponent's response, only once. Just raise your card, and then at the end of the candidate's answer, you'll then have 30 seconds to present your challenge, and your opponent has 30 seconds to respond. You may make only one challenge, as I said before. To help track your time, when you begin to speak, the timer screen will turn purple and start counting down, and then yellow when you only have 15 seconds remaining. The screen will turn red when your time is up, and if you continue to speak, a bell will ring and all hell will break loose. No, we'll just, we'll just make sure we pull you off, so. Any questions regarding the rules? Great, so if our timers are ready, let's go ahead and get started. Candidate Liliquist, please give your opening statement.
Okay, Michael. So, in my years as an active community volunteer and now elected official, I've learned that democratic self-government and building better community takes both idealism and pragmatism, the sense of urgency and endurance to the long haul, individual acts of leadership, and the ability to listen, learn, follow, and collaborate. It says digging into the details and putting your heart in the work, and that's what I do. I'm asking your vote, for your vote, not only because I've earned a reputation for openness, integrity, hard work, but also because my proven leadership produces results. With my leadership, we have invested in our community. We provided a capital grant for hundreds of affordable housing units, rental assistance to hundreds of families, and established new and larger shelters and programs for those who are homeless. We've maintained our streets, enhanced public transit, built safer sidewalks, crosswalks, and bike lanes to serve our neighborhoods. We developed parks and public trails with the highest investments going to neighborhoods with the greatest need and socioeconomic advantage. We supported businesses through the pandemic, both indirectly and directly, with monetary grants to keep people working. And so, parents can go to work, we also aided childcare operators. We installed solar panels, we worked our energy code, invested in clean energy production, and adopted perhaps the most ambitious climate action plan in the state. But challenges remain, and new calls to action tell us that much work has yet to be done. As only one example, to address concerns about overpolicing, social issues, or poverty issues, we will soon dispatch trained mental health professionals instead of police, if that's what's called for. No one is claiming victory, and my work continues. So let's be practical and also idealistic. Let's be guided by humane values and by knowledge, experience, and understanding. I hope you will support my reelection, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you, candidate Liliquist. Now, candidate Smaeson Marcus, you have two minutes for your opening statement.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting tonight's forum. It's an honor to be here. My name is Eve Smaeson Marcus, and I am running for Bellingham City Council Ward Six. As a working-class renter, musician, educator, service industry worker, and community organizer, over the last 13 years in Bellingham, I bring a needed perspective to City Hall. The most urgent issue of our time is the climate crisis, and we cannot afford incremental change any longer. I am committed to work with Lummi Nation, Nuksaq Tribe, and other partners to protect and restore our water, salmon habitat, and green spaces. Bellingham can be a leader in transitioning towards renewable energy while creating union jobs and building sustainable solutions to ensure a healthy future for generations to come. On City Council, I look forward to championing policy that makes homeownership more attainable, as well as strengthening renter protections, building permanently affordable housing, and increasing capacity for shelter and social services. When we reach a future where every person, family, and child has a safe place to call home, we all benefit. In the end, we need to remember that the challenges we face are all connected, and that our fight for environmental justice is connected, directly tied to economic housing and racial justice. My commitment to equity, intersectionality, and community health and safety is reflected in my endorsements from Lummi Nation, Washington Conservation Voters, Service Employees International Union for Healthcare Workers, Washington Education Association, Alliance for Gun Responsibility, Planned Parenthood, Sage Leaders, Pro-Choice Washington, and more. I believe in a Bellingham that can lead in climate resiliency, housing affordability, economic recovery, and community well-being. Collectively, we have the knowledge, skills, and resources to take care of one another and this beautiful place we call home. But we must act now, and I look forward to earning your vote and tonight's discussion. Thank you so much. You're muted.
Michael, you're muted.
Apologies. Thank you, candidate Smaeson Marcus. Let me turn first to candidate Liliquist with our first question. On what issues facing the city do you believe compromise is needed, and how would you pursue this compromise?
Practically speaking, I'd say almost every issue. I mean, that's how progress is made, is weighing the sets of valid concerns. It's not like there's one set of concerns or interests that are valid and the others are not. So, I think, the way I see it, serving the public interest is a balancing act of multiple interests. Maybe that's not what most people mean by compromise, but I do think it's important to be pragmatic and adjust your goals to accommodate as many of those valid concerns as possible. I think probably the biggest compromise has to do with housing and our expectations that our neighborhoods will remain unchanged. I do believe the City of Bellingham will grow whether we like it or not, and I think there are ways of creating that growth which does not disrupt traditional single-family neighborhoods, but that doesn't mean they're going to be immune from change. State law has told us we can no longer define zoning based on a definition of what a nuclear family is based upon traditional family relationships. Instead, we have to pivot to what's known as form-based zoning, to describe zoning in a way which gives the character that we enjoy in single-family neighborhoods if you happen to live in one, but maybe provide more flexibility so that more families and more individuals can live in the same community that we enjoy.
Thank you, candidate Liliquist. Let me turn, same question to you, candidate Smaeson Marcus. Go ahead.
Thank you. This is a great question. Compromise, yeah. You know, I think of collaboration, I think of teamwork. You know, we have so many moving parts and so many so many valid feelings and opinions and approaches that we need to work together to address the issues that we face as a community. You know, when I think of what we need to compromise, what comes up for me is comfort. You know, we need to compromise comfort in order to build more affordable housing, in order to adjust how we drive our cars and how we move through the city. You know, adjusting, compromising our comfort so that we have, you know, we're choosing to ride the bus, we're choosing to walk and to bike or roll. Comfort in how we acknowledge our history of racial violence in this, in this community, in this land. You know, in order to really move forward towards an equitable future, we need to acknowledge the history that's happened here and use anti-racism as a lens, and using equity as a lens, and how we deal with public health and public safety. You know, and I think if we, if we compromise our comfort just a little bit, we can build a more, a stronger Bellingham, a safer Bellingham for everyone, you know, and, and I think it's important that, you know, our goal is that collectively, public safety and public health is better for everyone in our community, whether that means driving our cars less or acknowledging the uncomfortableness of our history here in Watkin County and Bellingham.
Thank you, candidate Smaeson Marcus. Next question goes to you. And that question is, if elected, what would you hope to have accomplished by the end of your term?
Yeah, thank you. By the end of my term, I hope that I accomplish more access to affordable housing, more access to food security, more access to permanently affordable housing, public transportation, more access to a walkable and rollable city. Really pivoting from, you know, I feel like we have to change how we're doing things, and we need to look at who's not at the table, who's, who doesn't have access to these services. So, you know, one of the groups I work with here in town is the Birchwood Food Desert Fighters. I want the city to support their work. I want us, I want us to be able to like give them a space to work out of. Right now, all of our donations, all the, everything that we own as an organization is in someone's garage, is in someone's backyard. Imagine if the city created a space, a community center, somewhere where grassroots organizations could work out of and further service our community. You know, over COVID, we've seen 100% increase in the families we serve. We give out, we donate, we share over 1,000 pounds of food a week. That's a lot of people in need that are getting access to a service, and it's a bunch of volunteers, where it's a scrappy group of folks. But if we could have more resources, we'd be able to serve more people. So, you know, really using city resources, municipality resources to support grassroots organizations, support community efforts in public safety and health, and, and yeah, thanks.
Candidate Liliquist, same question to you.
Well, I think we've been making good progress on many of the issues. For example, we do have hundreds more affordable housing units than we had several years ago. Just this year, for example, I voted to increase the resources over $3 million per year, and that money goes to both affordable housing for low-income individuals, but also for mental health and behavioral services to support people in housing. So that's progress that's underway. I'm most concerned, I think, though, about making progress on the issue of climate change, because I think it's going to be the most difficult to achieve. The Climate Action Task Force told us that to really get to where we need to go, we need to go to zero, or as close as we can get to zero. So it doesn't mean half of us drive clean vehicles and half of us heater homes with electricity rather than fossil fuels. It means we need to go towards 100%. That's difficult, so I'd like to see credible and realistic progress towards that. So, working at the city, we'll be installing 90 electric vehicle charging stations for public use next year. We're going after contract right now, but just this afternoon, I was having conversations with staff about how we go further on that. How do we open up our public rights of ways? So curbside EV charging is common and the rule. Well, how do we get there? We're going to have an ordinance coming forward that has to do with phasing out fossil fuels and new construction. That's going to be pretty easy, because the time of construction, that's easy to do. How do we create the opportunity to retrofit our buildings? So my unit becomes, you know, where I live is totally green too. So I would like to see genuine progress on climate change.
Thank you, candidate Liliquist. The next question goes to you first, and that question is, do you, hang on here, yes, do you support greater housing density in Bellingham?
Yes, I do, but it is a really, I think we have to nuance this question. Because I think average density has to go up, but that doesn't mean density goes up same everywhere. Several years ago, the City of Bellingham, with my support, adopted a policy of trying to direct as much growth as we could into identified urban centers. People said that's not going to happen. Well, 45% of new units have gone into our identified urban centers. We are actually handing growth in a way that we intended it to go on. Two-thirds of our residential land is owned for single-family, but that two-thirds only counts 1/3 of our residents, because the other 1/3 handles the 2/3 that are remaining. That's what we call multi-family zoning. We've seen remarkable growth in the multi-family zoning areas. I think we can accommodate a great deal of increased density and growth in multi-family. And so, the challenge really, I think, for the city is to make sure those multi-family areas are well-provisioned with public amenities, that they're green, they're attractive, they're safe places to be. So, for example, that's one reason why our pedestrian and bicycle master plans have equity as a guiding principle. So that denser neighborhoods, neighborhoods which might traditionally be lower income, receive the majority of investments to make them safe. So that the Roosevelt neighborhood, see, receives significant investment, and we do the same thing with our parks planning. We prioritize the areas of greatest need, so that we can, can have density, but not with a sacrifice to the quality of life.
Thank you, candidate Liliquist. Now, same question to you, candidate Smaeson Marcus.
Thanks. Do you mind just restating the question?
Absolutely, happy to do so. Do you support greater housing density for Bellingham?
Thank you, yes. Yes, I do support greater housing density for Bellingham. You know, what's important, though, is as we increase density, we have to also make sure it's permanently affordable, because by increasing density doesn't solve the problem of our housing prices. We have to make sure that people can afford to live in the housing that we have here. And I also, you know, the multi-residential project that's coming into play, you know, it's only targeting neighborhoods or sections of the city that are already zoned multi-family, and I think it's important that we also look at our single-family residential zones. You know, Seattle just passed a, they changed single-family residential to neighborhood residential, and I feel that speaks more to what we need here in Bellingham. I believe we can keep neighborhood character, we can keep our green spaces, but we have to look at a variety of housing options, fourplexes, duplexes, triplexes, limited equity co-ops, community land trusts. There are ways that we can increase density without sacrificing equity. And right now, our low-income families, our higher denser neighborhoods are suffering with lack of access to green spaces, lack of access to bus routes, lack of access to services. And I think it's important that as we increase density, we're also making sure that people have access to what they need. We have to make sure they have access to schools, that they have right-of-ways, they have walking paths, they have places to bike, it's safe to walk on the sidewalk, you know, so it's, it can't just be just density, right? We have to come at it at approach that also talks about affordability and access.
Thank you so much. Next question, I'll start with you, candidate Smaeson Marcus. And that question is, what do you think is the city's biggest financial challenge now and in the next 10 years?
You know, there are a lot of things in play right now that are increasing our financing for housing and homelessness, which is great. I think we need more. I think 3 million isn't going to solve the problem, and I think we need to look at more progressive revenue. There is more funding coming down from the state department, state and national levels, but it's also about how we spend the money. So really looking at transparency and, and what it's being spent on, who our partners are, and what are the issues that are really being solved by this money. I think it's important for the community to be a part of that process. I'd love to see more participatory budgeting involved, like, we, we should be part of how we spend our money, and we need to know where our money's being spent. So, with, with the housing crisis, with homelessness, there's so much more we need to be doing. The work that's being done, thank you, and it's great, but we need more. You know, every year, point-in-time count increases, you know, 54 in Bellingham rents, with 57% of them being cost burdened with rents. That's a huge number, and that's only going to get higher, especially as the pandemic continues, especially as the eviction moratorium ends. So I think really looking to find funding, because it's not going away anytime soon, and we have to have long-term and short-term solutions. So making sure that we have a plan to increase funding, keep investing in housing options, affordable housing, and shelter and social services.
Thank you. Candidate Liliquist, same question to you.
Well, sure. First, let me just clarify that $3 million I'm talking about is 3 million in addition to the monies already available. Right now, we have approximately 9.2 million as continuous annual recurring funding, none of which existed before I entered office, and all of which I personally led, fought, campaigned for, and went door-to-door to make happen. Actually, this year, we're spending $22 million on housing and related services, because we've had to carry forward money and special one-time money. So it's way more than 3 million. I think our biggest financial challenge has to do with kind of what I call infrastructural overhang and the fact that annexations do not pay for themselves. We've done an analysis of our growth areas, and every single one of them is deficient to the tune of about 70, 80, 120 million dollars spending in the area you're looking at, where there's, there's inadequate infrastructure. So the city would like to grow, for example, the Alderwood area, but by growing the Alderwood area, we incur sort of liabilities for unbuilt infrastructure. That is huge, and I have yet to find an adequate solution to pay for that. Just for example, in Alderwood area, we'd need four new firefighters at least, just to serve that area. So there's annual operating costs, as well as, you know, equipment costs, a new fire station potentially. So, I mean, annexation is an enormous financial burden, and yet we have to find responsible ways to grow.
Thank you, candidate Liliquist. I think we have a challenge that just came up. We'll go ahead and do that, take that from you. You have 30 seconds, candidate Smaeson Marcus.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess I just wanted to point out, you know, I realize it's not just $3 million we're spending on homelessness and housing, but also the fact that, you know, I've been in Bellingham about the same amount of time that Michael's been in office. I'm sorry, council member Liliquist has been in office, and I've only seen my housing, my renting, rent go up. I've only seen housing costs go up, I've only seen our point-in-time count go up. And so, I, I know that there's been amazing efforts done, but it's not enough, and we need to do more.
Candidate Liliquist, you have 30 seconds to respond.
Well, sure, I'm happy to do more, and I think we are doing more. You know, I can report to numerous efforts that we've done just in the last year or two. But what Eve is pointing to, that rents are going up, that housing crisis, prices are going up, that homelessness is an issue, is not a Bellingham-only problem. It is a problem which is probably national in origin, has to do with how we treat mental illness, and it's regional in scope. So, these are large problems, too large for the city alone to solve.
Okay, this is going to be our last question. Time flies, and I'm going to go to, I'm going to go to, let's see, I think, who do I start with now? I think I go to candidate Smaeson Marcus first, I believe. Okay, well, we'll go with, yeah, go ahead. The question is, what can the City of Bellingham do to address the mental health issues of the homeless? You're on mute.
Thank you. Yeah, um, first of all, I guess I would just like to start by saying that mental health issues are not just experienced by people who are unhoused. And I think it's important to acknowledge that, that we, most, a lot of us struggle with mental health, especially in the pandemic. I think I can say most of us have experienced some kind of mental health issue, being quarantined, being isolated, right? So just acknowledging that, that's not just folks that are unhoused. I think we can do a lot more to connect people to services. I think it's really important to work with our health department and making sure that people have the resources that they need, that they're able to get connected to the resources that they need. And one that, one way we can do that is by stopping the speaks. We need to make sure that folks who are unhoused get services and that are not being swept. When people are swept, they are harder to find, they're harder to connect to services, and by making sure that we know where people are, we can connect with them, we can make sure they have what they need, that they have access to sanitary services, garbage, restrooms, water. You know, because that all plays into mental health too, being able to feel safe, being able to feel dry, not being cold, and not having slept for nights on end, you know, making sure that people have what they need is another way that we can, you know, meet the mental health needs of our unhoused neighbors. So just, yeah, I mean, we need to treat people like they're human beings, because they are, and that's, that's how I would, I would lead.
Thank you, candidate Smaeson Marcus. Now, same question to you, candidate Liliquist.
Well, sure, this sort of ties into what I was just saying, some of these are national issues. Experts in the area know very well that our current mental health problems began with the deinstitutionalization of the mentally ill back in the 80s, and the promise was that we would then replace those institutions, which were flawed, with community-based services, and those community-based services just haven't materialized the way they need to. I'm trained in psychology, my mom's a mental health provider, I have members of my family who are affected by mental illness. We're members of NAMI. It's a very important issue, but realize that the City of Bellingham does not have any social workers or public health officials or a health department. Okay, the county has those, and there are other agencies that provide these direct services. The city's role has been as a funder to make other agencies and nonprofits available. I think the single biggest thing we can do with regard to mental illness, for the homeless in particular, and Eve made a good point, mental illness affects everyone all walks of life, is what we are doing, which is an unarmed mental health crisis system to be dispatched to 911 calls for help. Some of the tragic circumstances we've seen in other parts of the country is where someone calls because a family member is in a mental health crisis, and we send law enforcement, and it escalates, and the results are tragic. Other communities have figured out ways to send mental health responders. We, the city council, have now approved a pilot program, so Bellingham will also send mental health responders instead.
Thank you. Thank you, candidate Liliquist. Now, you have a one-minute closing statement, and we'll start with candidate Liliquist.
All right, I needed to unmute first. Okay, well, first of all, I want to thank the League for hosting this event, and thank each of you attending today for caring about this election. Governing well is not easy. It takes time and energy and thought, and that is what I have given and will continue to give. Because of this, I've earned the endorsement of my fellow city council members, both past and present, and the mayor, and past mayors, and the county executive, and both state representatives of the 40th legislative district. I'm endorsed by organized labor and leading environmental groups, and Democratic parties of both the 40th and the 42nd legislative districts, and the sole endorsement of both the Democratic Women's Group and the Young Democrats of Western Washington University. If reelected, I will continue to work hard to support programs and policies that work, while challenging, championing new ideas, where and when we need to do more, or do it better. I ask for your support and your vote.
Thank you, candidate Liliquist. Now, your one-minute closing statement, candidate Smaeson Marcus.
Thank you, Michael, for, excuse me, facilitating in the League of Women Voters for hosting us tonight, and for all of you for being here. As someone who has been on the ground in Bellingham for several years, working with the Watkin Human Rights Task Force, Birchwood Food Desert Fighters, and many others, I'm in tune with the issues that our community faces today. I'm here because I believe Bellingham can be a leader in creating permanently affordable housing, and making the green choice the easy choice, and ensuring the health and safety for everyone who calls Bellingham home. As a teacher and artist, I often have to think on my feet and get creative with problem-solving. The status quo isn't working for so many of us, and I'm excited to bring a different perspective with community-oriented solutions to the challenges we face today. I've been endorsed by Lummi Nation, Washington Conservation Voters, Union for Healthcare Workers, Washington Education Association, and many others, because they see that my leadership centers the health and safety of our community. We cannot afford incremental change any longer, and I am ready to get to work. Vote Eve Smaeson Marcus for Bellingham City Council Ward Six, and have a lovely evening.
Thank you. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, I thank Thank you. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, I thank the candidates for being here today and for be willing to run for off public office. Voters can find more information about the candidates online at voteforeleven.org, and, um, and, uh, and in your voter pamphlet. Ballots will be mailed on October thirteenth, uh, twenty twenty-one. Your ballot must be postmarked or in a ballot drop box before eight P M. on November second, twenty twenty-one. Please remember to sign your ballot envelope, and if mailing by postal service, we recommend mailing early. Thank you all, candidates and attendees. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks. Have a good night.
Good evening.